The town of Pono Select Board. February twenty second, two thousand twenty four at six P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Board member roll call.
Angie Rowley.
Mike Gardner.
Jamie Percy.
Brad Harris.
Okay, everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance.
Approval of the agenda, public comment, approval of minutes, warrants, correspondence, and under correspondence. I'd like to add two white ones as A and B. Excuse me, I'd like to add P two seven, which are two large gathering permits. And I'd like to add a statement from the select board chair. Under correspondence, excess weight permits, town meeting discussion, ARPA funds discussion, contract and mowing services, RFP, employee evaluation, job performance review, policy discussion, public comment, intergern.
I'll move. What changes?
Second.
Any more discussion on this? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, any public comment here?
Okay, so.
Approval of minutes, minutes of February eighth, two thousand twenty four, select board meeting.
So.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same.
Minutes of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty four, special select board meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or corrections? They're being known. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes of February twentieth, emergency, we didn't have that.
That was canceled.
Cancelled, sorry.
Yep.
Only down. Warrants, council payable, February sixteenth, sixty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Counts payable, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll, February sixteenth, ten thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Payroll, February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence?
I do have a couple. So the first one is from Martina Barnes. She is from the Forest, State Forest Service. Hello, I'm writing to ask you and your select board if you would be interested in an update for me and other staff at the Manchester Ranger District about ongoing and upcoming projects in your town and surrounding area. We'd like to have about fifteen minutes at an upcoming select board meeting, so I just.
I would say yes.
Don't know if you all wanted to have them. Um, the second is from Donald Campbell. He's at the V L T. It's to Mike and myself. He is requesting that um, myself and him work with the Williams College on our forest management plan. Um, obviously, the Conservation Commission would have a lot to do with this too, but he's hoping that I can sort of be a co-supervisor of the Williams College class. It's free. It's a huge benefit to us. We'd be crazy not to, to be honest.
They want to have a class, do a class on our properties, what you're saying?
No, so Williams College is offering to help develop the final management plan on the land. We have to have a forest management plan. I did the interim one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to the best of my ability.
Generally, I think we've done, given the power of force or.
Well, we had our own force. This is a little bit different, so.
Um, it's it's a lot more than just the management of the log. And Donald Campbell's recommending it, right?
Well, Williams College has, and I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I think it's like an outing group or something like that. Yeah, they, this, this is what they do. They teach this at the college.
Well, it's a, it's an environmental planning class run by Sarah Gardner, Williams College. So they would, it would basically be one of their main uh, studies for the semester, I believe.
I, I would appreciate your input. I just. I'm hesitant as far as cross-border things, that's all, as far as for our town. That's my own personal hesitation. Because one other project for our town has come up and our select board, past select board members have gone to Mount Pilgrim. Um, Williamstown and the college also sent attorneys up and fought against things that would have helped growth in town, in our town. That's my only hesitation. So, but that's my opinion. I'm only one.
I would encourage a partnership with Williams College, especially with the new land acquisition, but that's just my opinion.
I'd like to hear from them in person before we make a decision.
From, from Donald Campbell or from Williams?
From both, honestly.
That's fine, Brian.
Get, get an idea.
I mean, I, I, I'm on the surface and had the Conservation Commission, because this is what part of their job to do. Having them in parks and rec, actually. You know, I think I would be out in the parks and rec scope. Um, you know, doing a forest management.
Yeah.
Um, but I think, I think having our conservation come directly in.
Sometimes it just glitches.
Sorry for the glitch. The internet stopped working, so, um, in case anybody missed that last part, um, was to have the Conservation Commission and, and meet with uh, uh, probably Sarah Gardner from Williams College to come up and meet with us.
First and then.
And then, and then we can make a decision from there. You know, I think having, I, I, and she is no relation, by the way, um, just to be perfectly clear. Uh, um, wouldn't know where she was sitting here. Um. I just think that's, I think that's the right path.
Yeah.
And I think set it up for sooner rather than later, so that, you know, when spring rolls around, they can get up, start doing what they need to do, because there, isn't there a deadline on that forest management?
Yeah, they're due, they're due a year after closing.
That's what I thought, so we.
And if.
Well, we got.
Be done, we at least have to have a good plan.
Right.
Right.
And the interim plan was linked to her, so I've done to the best of her ability, but she's not a forest manager.
Sorry from Donald, that's all I needed.
Oh, yes.
I'll tell you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, that's right. So, part of it was taken from the previous plan, and there was a bunch of stuff that, you know.
That's it for correspondence.
That's it for correspondence. Two large gathering permits? Yeah, I don't have them in front of me.
Yeah. They are in your folders, but do you want them in front of me here?
We got them. Thank you. I mean, they're same. It's the. We need to. Do the first one, Paul Goyat, his name of applicant. He is the contractor.
Yeah, hi guys, can you hear me?
Yeah, hey, Paul.
Okay, hi guys. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person.
The first permit. First permit is for June first and second for five thirty-six Dean Road.
Yep.
North. Do you want to do these separately or together?
They do them separate.
That's what I thought, yeah. Okay, so that's the first one. Paul's run this for how many years now?
Uh, seven years.
That's what I thought. Okay. Does the board have any questions for Paul? Any?
Are you doing anything different this year?
No, nothing different. Same thing as always, just trying to, uh, you know, keep all, keep all the kids having fun. Um, the family has been. You know, I, I love coming up the panel, using person as well, so just, uh, just all of them, it always works well for me.
He's, um, providing us with a, um, rough sketch of the track and, and the way things will lead out, where the EMS is going to be and parking and different things.
There was no issues last year, right?
Not to my knowledge.
No, we had no issues.
Last two years to my knowledge, it hasn't been.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's been.
I made a motion to approve the, uh, application of the Dean Road location.
Five thirty-six Dean Road.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Sorry, Paul.
Oh, sorry, you're, uh, five thirty-six Dean Road, so that's the second one. That was the six one and six two.
Right, June first and second. It's just the, it was the one that was on top. We're doing them all at the same time. It's the one I grabbed, it was on the top of the pile, Paul, that's all.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Yeah, we'll get to the next one in a second here.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this one was the top of the pile. I have a motion, I have a second. Any more discussion on this? Any questions, comments? More? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Yeah, so. I'm signing off. What's that? Yeah, I might show, I want to sign it in the, in the right place, that's all. Um, same thing, Paul Goyat. This one is for fifteen eighty-seven Stromeyer Road. It's May fourth and fifth. Uh, the timing is a little different on this one. I should have said the time on the other one, do you, but Saturday night was um, till eleven.
Yeah.
Um, and what was the start time on Saturday, P?
Eight AM.
That's what I thought. This one on May fourth is, the start time is twelve P M to three P M.
It's a short day on Saturday, yep.
Yep, and May fifth is eight to four, eight AM to four P M. So, uh, Saturday, May fourth, Sunday, May fifth. Same exact thing. I'm sure there is a diagram in here. There is right there. Um, Joe, you're saying the parking's going to be the same as it was last year in the field?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
And there was no issues?
No.
No, no issues there.
On the way we were, so. Okay, what's the board's pleasure in, no, fifteen eighty-seven Stromeyer Road?
Make a motion to approve the second. Large gathering permit for Stromeyer Road.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor, and I have a second for Paul Goyat, P twenty-seven, May fourth, May fifth, on fifteen eighty-seven Stromeyer Road. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, the only difference on this one is I don't have that last signature page. Yeah, on this one. I mean, there's a signature, a name of promoter. So there in here. I don't know, see where the select board signs it. Maybe I'm missing it.
I forget, right now.
And I bought the data. I don't see it. You know, Brian, I, I definitely got, I was going back to see if it was doubled up on this one. I didn't see through in here.
Listen to the doubler.
Nope, it's, I'm just missing that last page. I'll interrogate, I'll try to, I'll sign that. Let's bring me to my thing, this like word statement for the executive assistant. And like this conversations that have revolved around our executive assistant.
I was just looking into my email when I sent it to Tara.
Sorry. We're, Paul, we're sat with you. So I'm led to some recent emails and conversation, conversations that have revolved around our executive assistant nature be addressed directly to the select board in the future. It is the consensus of the majority of the board that our executive assistant has not operated out of the scope of her job. And that's all I have. Any other correspondence? About excess weight permits, just the one that I had here, right? It is from and I'm gonna absolutely destroy this name, but we're not brothers. And it's a permit for one, two, three, four, five trucks. Their certificate, it's complete, Joel has signed off on it.
Motion to approve Carreras Road Formant to pull.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
The excess weight permit, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My other side. Town meeting discussion.
Um, so Eddie is with us today, our constable, if you want to join us, Eddie. I thought, well, Eddie actually suggested maybe having a conversation about what his role might look like at town meeting.
Yeah, so, um, you know, obviously this year, you know, we talked about roles and responsibilities of the constable. Um, one of the state statutes would be, you know, removal of disorderly people and being understanding, you know, it's a respectful forum where people come, voice their opinions, concerns, it's why we gather every year. I just thought maybe we should outline some kind of ground rules and, you know, how, how we're looking to uh, make some boundaries around keeping a civil discussion and, and respectful for everyone. Yeah, my general take was, you know, I think everyone's welcome to come, you know, share our expressed opinions and feelings on things. Um, you know, with the exception of like excessive profanity, threatening, you know, threats um, and things of that nature. Just wanted the board's take on, um, kind of boundaries we were looking for.
I don't think we've had any of that in a while, and years ago, it's heard stories, but I'm not, I don't know if I've ever seen it since I've been going to town meeting, I don't know. And I'm.
I would agree, you know, in light, you know.
Stories, but.
In light, but you know, unfortunately, in today's day and age, you know, you do have a lot of that and, you know, even some correspondence, there's some, you know, contro always a controversial opinion and, and some people, you know, um, might lack the capacity to keep a civil conversation, so I figured it was worth putting out now and seeing everyone's, you know, feelings on that.
I think from my standpoint on this, um, it's a great question, something that I haven't considered until you put it on the agenda, to be honest with you, but, um, I think at this point, from my standpoint, I'd like to leave that up to Eddie's discretion. If he feels that somebody's getting out of line, it's kind of your job. Right? It's kind of what the people voted you in for to, you know, handle situations, I guess, like that. It's within your state statute, within your right to make that decision, and if somebody's, in your opinion, getting out of line in any way, shape, or form, then.
My take on that would be, you know, I think it'd be reasonable, everyone gets, you know, a little overly passionate. Give them kind of a one-time, hey, we need to settle down, keep things civil. Um, and if that can't happen, you know, we'd have to.
I think that's fair. I, I think asking somebody to, you know, somebody, somebody is getting out of line, if you ask them one time. They, or, you know, give them the fair warning, if you don't settle down, you're, you're going to be removed. Um, I, I'm fine with that. Do, do we need a board vote, or even want a general consensus on that? Well, I don't know if we need to vote on it.
And there's still obedience, I mean, it's overall, and we've had some heated discussion in recent years, but.
It's not really the board's job to remove anybody, so it wouldn't fall to you anyway.
Right, yeah, and, and, you know.
Mediator, and he usually keeps, you know, pretty good control over it.
Yep, yeah, and just again to put out, you know, I, um, total respect and understanding, it's an open forum for people to voice opinions and concerns, all of that, you know, and we're just putting that out here for, for safety and keeping things civil and constructive.
Exactly. Is that the answer to your question? I did that one anyways, right?
Yeah, yeah, for the most part there.
We have any more town meeting discussion?
I think so, somebody else does.
I think that was it, really.
Just a reminder, please bring your town reports if you have one.
Yeah, yeah, if you've received a town report, please bring it with you.
Already took one, please.
Oh, there will be some, there will be some available.
Yeah.
If not, um. And I believe Eddie's on the right track, devil, and keeping it. Perfect.
Thanks. You guys coordinate some.
Hey, you, you know how to get all of me. Or anybody else, man, man. Okay, which brings us to ARPA from Tommy. What is good? Brings us to ARPA funds discussion. So I was approached, um, I people for looking for some ARPA funds. And then I reached out to, um, the other two organizations, the rescue squad and the other fire department. So they're looking for some, they're looking for some ARPA funds, for some specific equipment. I'd like to list, I'd like to read out what each department or organization is looking for with the amounts. I'd like to come up with a agreed-upon amount if we decide that's what we're going to do, is to give them some money out of the ARPA money. And I'd like to do them um, all three together. I don't want to do them single, they could do all three requests together, the fancy made with the board. Unless somebody has something different. These are in no order, again, Paul, it's just the way they were handed to me, so I'm going to read them. Dear Pono Select Board, I'm writing this email on behalf of the membership of the Pono Fire Department for a request for funding for SCBA, which are self-contained breathing apparatus, for people who don't know, air-packed tanks. We are now at our limit for hydro testing for our air-packed tanks. What this means is we can no longer use these tanks and they must be removed from service. Each tank has a full service life of fifteen years. They must be tested every five years and we are at the end of the fifteen lifespan. The department has requested grant funding from AFG Grant for the past three years and have not been successful. We hope that you consider our request for fifteen new tanks at a cost of one thousand seventy dollars each, so we may continue to use. We, we may continue to use them at fire scenes and training. Thank you, Pono Fire Department, Craig Ordell.
That equals sixteen thousand fifty dollars.
Yeah. This one is from the Pono Valley Fire Department. After hearing there were some ARPA funds available, Pono Valley fires came up with a couple of requests. The east station and south stream road is in dire need of a heating system replacement. Estimated cost is fifteen thousand dollars. We are also in need of a set of turnout gear for our engine three, that, that cost is forty-five hundred dollars. We would greatly appreciate, appreciate the consideration, Jason Alansky, Pono Valley members.
My question was, what is turnout gear? I have no idea.
So it's the boots, bunker pants.
Oh, okay.
Helmet gloves.
All right, gotcha. I know that's what that's called.
And last but not least, from Pono Rescue. It's my understanding that the town needs to allocate some ARPA funds by the end of April, which it should be, be the end of December. That's okay.
It's not, it's not in April.
What's that?
It is the end of April we have to allocate by.
Oh, it is April?
I thought it said in our notes.
Got it.
Allocate, allocate by the end of April, used by December thirty-first, twenty-four, twenty.
Sorry.
All right.
So the other, it's false information and the other one we had. That's okay. So let me start orders. My understanding that the town needs to allocate some ARPA funds by the end of April and reached out for us to see what we were in need of. I spoke with our board and we have determined that we would like to use some of these funds for our new repeater and our ambulance assessment fee. For the repeater, we currently have a balance of ten thousand dollars for the remainder of what we have. We received six thousand dollars for federal grant for, for a new repeater system, which is what we use for all communications with our dispatch center. Our current repeater is outdated and we are unable to obtain parts for it, so a new one was crucial. The ambulance assessment fee is a yearly invoice that we give from the state of Vermont in order to be able to operate as an ambulance. This year's amount is for ten thousand forty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. Amount is calculated off a percentage of the previous year's insurance reimbursements. I would be happy to provide an invoice if you need it, if you need something else. These items will not work, we have other items as well. Thank you for your time and assistance, Becky Levine, Executive Director, Pono Rescue. So does anybody have any questions? I'm going to go back to the first one for the SCBA. Does everyone understand the bad news? We all do, right?
Aye.
So for our audience, this self-contained breathing apparatus, if you don't know, allows the firefighters and rescue personnel to enter into a hazardous situation, whether it be a fire or a hazardous material situation. Um, I see a carbon monoxide call. Um, help me out, Jamie, Jeff, Justin, well, I.
Any hazard.
Any hazardous situation.
Hazardous breathing situation.
Yes, and, and for our audiences, um, I could bring everybody up, but I'm going to introduce the fire and rescue people who are here. Justin Alansky, Jeff Miller, uh, Ellen Stromeyer, Jamie Elwell. Sam, that's what I thought, Sam Green, I didn't want to blow it up though, and Becky Levine. Um, so these are, each, each organization is well represented tonight. Um, so if our board has any questions on any of this stuff, they, they are certainly here to answer. Um. I know that from my thirty years in the fire service, I know exactly what they're talking about. These air tanks are not, the service life is, even though they're not used a super tongue, that's what the regulation is, and without these tanks or with the, with these tanks not being certified, if something happens.
Insurance company.
The insurance company, people, people's lives, um, families, just, just, it's not going to be a good scenario. That's, that's the SCBA is in a nutshell. So now I'm going to go to, uh, Pono Valley, heating system is a heating system, the turnout gear, and to answer Andy's question, is full turnout gear. Um, boots, pants, coat, gloves, um, hood, and helmet. Right, right. Did I miss anything? I don't think I did. Um, it's, it's a requirement. Um, ten-year lifespan, right? Yeah, ten-year lifespan, no matter how much it's used, it can sit in the corner for ten years. And if it's never worn, it still has to be rotated out per regulation every ten years. It can never, it, 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 some of it may never be worn.
Per N F P A rule.
Per, per National Fire Protective Association rules, and the cost of it is I've been out of it for a while, but the cost is ridiculous, because I think the last ones that I bought were like eighteen hundred bucks for all of that.
It's anywhere from forty-five to five grand.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, and when Jason was talking to me about it, it's like, holy smoke, okay? So it, it is, and this is not, so, so and I want to be clear on this, because I know this to be a fact, this is not top of the line, the best you can buy. This is serviceable, adequate, what our chief officers and, and commanding officers in, in our town are comfortable sending their firefighters or themselves, for that matter, into a, into a situation. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Meets the present N F P A staff.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think, I think they probably, and I hope they did this, because I used to, when I was in chief, I used to do it, you know, you don't buy the, you don't buy the bottom of the barrel, you try to come up a little bit, because the bottom of the barrel is barely.
Mm-hmm.
Right? But, you know, you try to protect your guys as much as you can, and girls.
Yeah.
And men and women, you try to protect them to the, to the best that you can, so. Everyone.
You replacing just bottles or you replacing a full pack?
Just the bottles right now.
Just the bottles?
Yeah.
Not, all your packs are fully serviceable right now?
All, all the packs are. We can, we can continue to have those recertified. We can, we can continue to have those recertified, but the bottles being vulnerable on the back now and fifteen year lifespan. And that's on the manufacturer date, so then, you know, trying to find bottles, cuz everybody wants it version of limited. So far, we've got ten ones just to keep us going.
Yeah, I just know that the rest of the apparatus sometimes.
Yep, no, that is. Flow tested every year.
Yep.
Um, we get re-certified, though, as long as it passes the flow test.
Yep.
It's resolved on its best, but the policy is all. Question fifteen, fifteen years, you gotta discover.
We're doing the same thing in Bennington, so.
Yeah, and it's, you know, we, we were lucky that when we bought the air packs, we bought them all on the break. And they all went out, they all went out at the same time, so.
Yep.
And we tried for the last three years to, to get a grant to redo it, haven't been successful, unfortunately.
Jamie, I, I have, I do have one question, and it's just from my own concern more than anything. These fifteen bottles, excuse me, do you have spare bottles that you're using as well, or are these the only fifteen that you have?
That, that'll be the fifteen we have. We'll still have to buy more.
Okay.
We'll, we'll still have to get, because I'm, and that being a leaf session for a perfect happen, on spare bottle, correct? You know, so we, we still have backup packs that. You know, we're lucky that we're, people say lucky, but we don't have the memberships that we had before.
Well, that's what I was asking, because I know.
Or, or keep them, so that everybody that's certified can go in and do their job.
So that's, that's, that was my question, is basically is, cuz I know when I was in the fire service, we had. We, we had more than that, but we had more members that were certified to go into, so. All the way in town.
Yeah, we're, we're just trying to, you know, get everybody back to certify and so their back to use.
Which brings me over to Becky's in the rescue squad. Um, it's kind of self-explanatory. Becky, maybe you could, I mean, the repeater's a repeater, and we all know what that's for. Maybe you could enlighten us a little bit on the ambulance assessment fee, cuz that's. Definitely new to me, but you don't doubt it. I know you gotta have it, I'm just, you know, it's.
So that's what I knew within the last six years, uh, every year we have to pay in, uh, the state from the uniform revenue essentially, and we can operate. It's pretty, pretty cut and dry. It's not something that we like to pay, but. On top of all the other expenses, that is one of the largest ones we have.
Does anybody have any questions for Becky on anything?
That's all that they're requesting.
Yeah, they're, no, they're requesting ten thousand dollars for a repeater and ten thousand forty-three dollars for the, the assessment fee.
We got partial, or, uh, all we have is for just over sixteen thousand dollars for that, um. And we got six thousand dollars from AFG grant, um, like I said, we can't even get part started currently.
The current one's pretty old.
Yeah.
Is that the one still at Scottsdale sign? Yeah, that current one's.
Yeah, we're, and we're having issues with it now, and at this point, we're just waiting for Motorola to release it, uh.
Yep, that's, that's gotta be, it's gotta be pushing twenty years.
Yeah, uh, so probably back the other day, and it's probably just over twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, I remember when I was put up in Scottsdale. Right, on, on North Mason Hill. Was it going back there? Just curious. Yep, good, it's a good spot. Yeah, no, it's a good spot. Yeah, yeah, it works for you. Pomo has dead spots, I don't care where you, the dead spots in Pomo.
Oh, yeah.
There's no, there's nobody sitting in this room that won't tell you that there's not a dead spot in Pomo that's ever done any, a, a fire call.
Not why.
There are dead spots. Um, I have a statement from Bob, he couldn't be with us tonight. Oh, there it is.
I definitely hear it, do you?
Yeah. Bob's statement, uh, my apologies for scheduling conflict, for my scheduling conflict with tonight's meeting. My understanding from my communication with Mike is that the ARPA discussion is to allocate funds for our first responders. As many already know, I'm in full support of using ARPA funds for lifesaving equipment for our first responders. And Bob goes on to say that, um, perhaps we can have additional entities be discussed for ARPA funds at a later date. So he's in full, full support of ARPA funding for our. First responders, my, uh, rescue squad and fire personnel. Just have too many papers, sure, that's all. So we have a range of, um, sixteen thousand dollars to, to twenty thousand dollars. Um. I know where I stand. I don't know. My, my suggestion, so let me find my ARPA paper from our. Sewer Commission meeting. I have the figures here in front of me from that. Uh, these are round numbers, I'm not gonna go into dollars and cents, so to speak, but round numbers. We have roughly one hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and forty dollars before we started the sewer commission meeting tonight. We allocated twenty-six thousand five hundred to Darcy. We have two hundred and four thousand eight hundred and forty dollars left. My recommendation would be to. Give out sixty thousand dollars tonight, twenty thousand dollars across the board. Starting point, um, which leaves us with a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. To allocate after we, and I would like to do it, uh, twenty thousand to each group. So that we're, we're straight across the board.
That's exactly what I had written down. Twenty-five.
But it's certainly open for discussion.
I was thinking twenty-five, just so I could get extra gear, extra bottles. I.
I had, I had to start it somewhere, Jamie.
My, my theory behind it is because I'm still active in Bennington. I respond down here from UTLA the time when I'm available. And I know what it's like when we got a good work instructor fire and you start sucking up air bottles. And once the casquet system goes down, you know, you start pulling those spares. Um, and same with gear. How many times have it been twenty below zero, you're freezing, nice throw another set of gear on. And so, you know, besides a guy having to be one set off you when you come out of the building, cuz you freeze. I mean, that's, that's kinda where I am, and I'm sure the other, you know, rescue squad. Their gear to get also, I mean, that's, that's my opinion.
Brian?
I'm fine with twenty-five each.
I'm perfectly fine with twenty-five. I just think that we should let people know, if we're gonna give this to them, this has nothing to do with the money that is on the ballot. It says additional money. I just don't want people to think that we gave them money, so I don't want them to say, okay, we don't have to give them any more. This is ARPA, this is totally separate, what they're voting on, on Tuesday, so I just wanna make sure everybody realizes that.
This conversation came up before Christmas, Jamie, fair, right? I don't remember, November, whatever it was, it was in the fall, late fall. Early winter, like I said, Jamie approached me and, um, I've talked with Craig. Over this, is the chief of the fire department as well. I reached out to Jason and Becky, because what's fair is fair, and I think all of you guys. I don't, I don't think that. I don't think that, uh, the majority, I, I don't wanna say the majority, I don't think a significant number of people understand. The amount of hours that it takes to volunteer for. The fire services or the rescue squad even, even being paid. You're, there's some, some paid, Becky, um. So, cuz Becky's not, um, it's, it's a, it's a tremendous amount of commitment, it's a tremendous amount of hours. Um, I, I have been involved in the fire service, so I haven't been in, in a while. But I was from the time I was old enough to stand on a milk crate and pump water, and that's, and that's the, the god's honest truth. I know what it takes. I know that funding is brutal. I know the days of doing the chicken barbecue with. Uh, you know, a raffle or.
Bingos.
So bingo, whatever, you can, you can choose whatever you want. I mean, there, and, and I think that, I think that that stuff, to a certain degree, some of those things. I think they're, I think they're incredibly important to do different things, right? Different fundraisers, a cash calendar, or whatever, whatever you guys are doing. And I think it's incredibly important for, just to be. It's, it's not, it, it doesn't cover gas for training, okay? I know this. But I think it's also incredibly important to continue to do those things for, just to be in the public eye. Just, just to be in the public eye, just to, just to put yourself out there. I know you guys did a, I was actually in Wyoming when you guys did a dinner. Which kinda irritated me, your timing was terrible, but, you know.
We wanna do it this year, so.
Good, uh, uh, yeah, don't do it in September. I'm going away at the end of September, so, or, or late in December, but other than that, I'll be there. But I just, I just wanted to throw that out there, and I don't, you're, you're not gonna make any money. You're, you're not gonna do anything, you're, you're just gonna be out there in the public.
Basically to get us out and.
Right. Ask, answer questions.
The fire department's funding themselves.
Nope, answer questions, you know, if people have a question, they wanna see you, whatever, put the kids down in a fire truck, right, down at the. I know you guys all go to the, the, I guess they don't call it a fair anymore, do they, and whatever it was. There was a lot of, I saw a lot of equipment down, down there. I think it's a great, I think it's a great day.
What's the total hours now, just to be firefighter, basic level firefighter one?
Between three and four hour, three and four hundred hour. Like fifteen, sixteen years ago, when I did it, it was a hundred and eighty.
Yeah, well, the last time I did it was ninety-two hours.
The last time mine did it, we went away.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, is, is people need out there, need to realize.
The firefighter one, and Rover Alps, are Manchester up? You know, so that means that people have to take them on a tour night of the week and drive up there.
Right.
Come back. All the volunteer.
Yep.
Then try to fund yourself.
No, I just.
No, I'm glad you brought that up. So, let me do a little.
I'm willing to make a motion, or done discussion.
I, I just wanna put a couple of things out, Jamie, because I put the one forty-four out there. And I'm not, I just wanna be.
That's fine.
Bring everything out there, you know, that's all. Looks, looks good to leave us with, if we were to go from the sixty thousand. Twenty inch to seventy-five thousand, twenty-five inch, it brings our total from one left, our total left. From one forty-four, eight forty, to one twenty-nine, eight forty. Just, just so you guys can think that, you know, think that through, so it's, it's, uh, about, well, it's fifteen nine.
I'm still willing to make a motion to, uh, use ARPA funds, twenty-five dollars or twenty-five thousand. Per department request. Um, as, as requested. For, uh, their use for tools and equipment and.
So I have a motion for twenty-five thousand dollars. For the Pomo Fire Protective Association, twenty-five thousand dollars for the Pomo Valley Fire Protective Association, twenty-five thousand dollars for the Pomo Rescue Squad. To be used for their requested. Um. Items, tools and equipment. And then the balance to be used as they see fit. Is that a fair?
Yep.
Motion?
Second.
Any more discussion? Alls in favor? Ellen, when, just so they know, when could we process that? Okay, no, I know, I know it's not gonna be this week, but it could be, it could be as soon as next week, right?
Just to be fair, what's, what's the hours for EMT one?
I know, I'm sorry.
Uh, EMT never ends around two eighty. And that's just for, that's just class time, that doesn't include right time internship.
Right.
Actually.
Well, I remember when was the hover.
Oh, I just, I wanna be fair with people understanding.
Good, good question, Jamie, I, I apologize.
No, I.
Cause that question wasn't answered. Back, that's, that's definitely a fair question. Which, okay, so we're good with fire department, ambulance service.
Thank you.
ARPA funds. Thank you guys for your service. Thank you for all your service and all your hours. I know, I know we miss a lot, you guys are out cutting trees and. Rescue squads on standby, a whole bunch of, doing different things besides ambulance calls and emergency calls. There's, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on other than, um. And it's all, it's all basically emergency response, but it's other than a fire or an accident or a medical call or. Whatever, right? There's, there's a lot of things. Yeah. I'll remember that. Yeah, and Kayla's car goes up at three, I'll remember that. Thank you, everyone, for, for attending tonight, thank you for your input. We still wanna talk about ARPA funds? So we have, well, we have to do something with our ARPA fund, right? So we still have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand left. We wanna take a portion of that and put it into our capital fund. And then that portion's allocated. So, so we'd be within our, we'd be, and I'm glad Ellen's here, we'd be within our allocation date.
Well, okay. How can we word it? Or, at my. I'm trying, trying to. Wants help hopefully, to put it in the capital fund under a line item that we can utilize it when we need it. I, what's the proper verbiage, I guess, is what I'm asking.
You put it in the capital fund, it's for a capital project.
Okay.
Okay, you can't put it in the capital fund and then use it for legal fees.
That's, that's one.
So what are cap, so if it's capital projects?
Right, no, I understand, I know.
When I'm talking capital project, general fund, or capital project, road fund, or both, does both have a capital, uh, capital fund?
But we have to, we have to make sure.
Fund can be used for, for.
Yeah.
Any capital project. You can't pull it back there, you can't put it in there, you can't designate it to the capital fund and. Then say, oh, I'm just gonna take it back out and use it for something else, because it has to fall under.
We can't put it into our emergency fund.
We don't have any emergency.
I, I'm just under titleized.
So let me ask you.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, we don't have, there's no such thing as an emergency fund, we don't have an emergency fund. If, if you wanna put it just in, uh, right eye, cuz I think ARPA said you can just put it in your general fund for. General expenses of the town, but then it doesn't roll over into. So it shouldn't really go with the fund.
No, that's why I'm asking.
Ellen, if we, if we put the money into the, into the general. Capital fund, if we had a catastrophic road.
We can't transfer it over to.
That's what I thought, okay, yes.
General fund is general fund, road fund is road fund.
I think that's what I thought.
I don't know, the general fund, you can put some in the road fund, um, I would, I would suggest, um, maybe. Discussing that with Joel, if you wish to do that, and ask him where he would need it more before you voted to put it into a fund.
Well, I think that, I, I just wanted to bring this up tonight while we were talking about, and, and because we, you know, we do have to. Get it taken care of, so. Um. I think that's, we should think about, and then bring it back, um.
Cuz you have a little time, right?
We have a little time to bring it back and we discuss that, but I just wanna throw that out there and get it, get our wheels spinning.
Yes.
You know, get our wheels spinning and.
In our balance sheet for the town.
Yes.
All our funds are, they're all have their own numbers now, so if I give you a big printout, you could look at it. Blacktop fund or the capital fund for the general or the capital fund or the. You just read the balance sheet and it tells you exactly what we have in there, so you would kinda know where you would. I mean, capital projects fund is a greater idea, because many things can happen.
Right.
That you, that, that is kind of like a.
An emergency fund, but yeah.
Facetally, yeah, I mean, if a. Covers if our roof blows up, but what about if it doesn't cover everything?
Right, right.
So then that's a. So then that's a capital project.
I think that's something that we need to have your input on and some discussion.
Just let me know.
I know, I know, I kinda sprung it on you tonight, all the ones here, but yeah. I think that's something we need to discuss and figure out and bring back to the board. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Same thing, uh, contract mowing services, RFP?
So you will follow that invitation to bid, it's the same as it was, was three years ago, um, when it was awarded. It, it changed slightly, we did add Oak Hill Cemetery. Um, in your copy that I sent you, I highlighted and read the field by the racetrack. I don't know if the board wants to continue mowing that, because it is not.
Does anybody use it at all?
I never see anybody using it.
You guys use it at all anymore?
We don't use it for baseball anymore.
None, that's all right.
And I don't think the soccer, I don't think anyone, I don't think any of our youth groups in town use.
It's just used by private individuals at this point.
And it's, yeah, it's not town property.
And I think, I don't think the, if you were to pull into that north entrance, I don't think, I'm sorry, you're all blurry. I'm not even gonna say, I don't think you're, I don't think the left-hand side is mowed, just the right-hand side.
Just the ball field side.
And I, I do believe that across the road on the east side of seven is mowed as well with that, but that's not.
I don't know if they were mowing that.
I think he did last year. I don't know if he mowed every time.
I've seen the state mower too.
Yeah, so, I, I don't have a problem taking though.
Probably take it off, but the only other idea to shorten that, or to decrease the contracted amount, would be to have Bill pick up the mowing here. But I don't know if that's something that you guys wanna consider, or just have it all.
Something that I talked to talked to Joel about too, cause he may have other projects cited, or.
Well, I think Bill has the time when he's here, cause he's here, um, half the day. But again, that's to talk to the board.
So I think we have to go buy equipment, right, right, we have to buy them.
Yeah, you'd have to buy more, and it would be.
And, you know, you're not gonna go to Home Depot or some place.
They gotta get them more, then you gotta worry about storage and maintenance.
What's your pleasure with the RFP? Uh, did we, didn't we pay for Oak Hill anyway last year? Right, so it's just added into this, we, we paid.
And we added planting flowers at Oak Hill too, cause it wasn't in there.
And we had amended, we amended the contract last year for Oak Hill.
Yeah, we did.
Yep, right, so, the, adding Oak Hill is nothing that we didn't already expend anyway.
Right.
You're just taking away the ball field down by the racetrack.
Yeah.
That we don't use.
And everything else looks exactly the same.
And are we okay with the dates that are planned there? It'll go out tomorrow. And they have until end of March to submit. And the procedure was sealed bid at a duly warned meeting, we'll be, so you'll be opening the bids and awarding them in open session.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to make sure I'm clear on the process.
Yep.
Okay, yes, that's it.
I was just looking into insurance, so twelve PM on Thursday, March twenty-eighth, proposals we opened and awarded at a duly warned select board meeting. Any questions should be directed to Tara in this bit. Any question, Donna?
Done, right.
Yeah. I think we're ahead of schedule, actually, huh?
I was noticing.
You're scary. Any more questions on the RFP, Molly? Employee evaluation, job performance review, policy discussion?
So I put this on there just so we could have an initial discussion about what the board would like to see for evaluations or job performance evaluations. Um, it's in our personnel policy that we could be subject to them, but it, we don't have a specific policy that I'm aware of. And we also don't have, like, if you say, we'd like everyone to do a self-assessment, we don't have those already established, so it's something I would have to find.
Something that we dropped the ball on, that, as far as the board went. When we did the new personnel policy, that we, inner workings, to lead up to those. That was prior to you being here.
Do you want to do?
Annual, annual, the goal is to do annual evaluations, um.
That's what I had, I just wrote some notes here, actually. I'd like to do, I'd like to do yearly for our employees that we have now, at least yearly. And I'd like to do six months for, if we had a new hire. Because I think, I think at the three month, I thought about a three month, but I think in my opinion, a three month probably takes a little longer than three months to, to start learning what's going on, right, you're gonna have right, it was a six month, I mean, you're, you know, two years hired, but a six, a, a three month is pretty soon.
Yeah, it is pretty fast.
Right, it's pretty fast, a six month gives you a chance to get your feet in, get in the door, get your feet wet, get what's going on, you know? Whether it be for, whether it be for the assessor, or, or whether it be for you know, executive, any, any hire that we have, you know, administrator assistant.
So with that said, do you want to do these with every employee, or you, is the select, we're going to do them with department heads? And the department heads do them with their employees?
Believe that, that's what we were, their goal was, was the department heads were doing for their, with their employees. If there was any issues, then they would bring, the department head would contact the select board, but you would take care of the department heads. Initially, things have changed.
Well, the only, the only the only red flag that I see there is cause there's no department.
That's true.
You do, who's
Individual.
The executive assistant would kind of works under the executive assistant, right?
Correct.
So, would the executive assistant do though? I, I personally think that there are full-time employees should be done by the board. And I think that way, and I'm just kind of, I'm kind of running it through my head, is that way, if there is, it, it also gives that employee a chance to, um, if they have any concerns about things they're doing, things, if they have any, you know, things that are going, you know, any concerns about the way that their departments are working. It gives them a chance to air, you know, to air things out. And I think our part-time employees that work under the department heads could certainly be done by the department heads.
Uh, just, just Just off the top of my head, transfer station, both of them are part-time.
Right.
But Tom is a department head, so Tom would do runs, just trying to think through different people here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I think have the department heads do their department people and then
What should the department heads do, once we set up a format, should the department heads do us, their evaluation, their part of the evaluation, then us have a piece of the evaluation also.
Yeah, like we should have to review it and sign off on it, but I don't, unless there's a glaring problem, I don't think we as a board should have to meet with every individual employee to do an evaluation.
So I think, I think we can reach out, we don't have to decide this tonight, right, this is open discussion, we're not gonna decide it today. I think we can reach out to our department heads, right, and we can ask them how they feel about doing evaluations first. I think the select board should be definitely in charge of doing department head evaluations. And, um, I think we need to figure out as a board, how we do maybe the board does both the executive and the administrative assistant, cause we certainly could set it up that way. It's a policy that is, there's, there isn't one, really, we can, we can design this however we want. Just thought, you know, but I mean, that's what, that's what we're here for, right? Or do we have, I, I don't have any executive assistant doing the administrative assistants, because they work directly with each other and under each other and over and whatever, they're, they're, they're in. I think the executive assistant would be done by the board for sure, because that's sort of a department head. I think the clerk assessor probably needs to be done by the select board.
Well, you've got zoning, you have animal control, you have Wendy, uh, assessor clerk.
The ones that don't have it, you know, I guess they're technically their department heads. Yeah. Yeah, Department One Eddie, you know, the kind of bull, you know, he's Department One.
He's elected, he's not really.
Yeah.
We're not really talking about elected, just.
Gets his evaluation every March.
Yeah.
Every other.
Sorry, that's true. I was just using, can you ever sit there? You're pretty quiet. Um, I think that needs to come back, I think we need to, I think we need to reach out to the department heads and ask them what their feelings are. And then bring that back, but it's definitely open discussion, or opening the discussion to get this done and over with and get a policy in place to have it, to have it done. But I think, I think a six months on a new hire and a yearly, uh, on a person who's been here for a while is plenty, I don't think you need to do it every three, four months, no. It's just my.
It might be possible too, to set up so that department heads are doing their evaluations with their employees before they come in to do their evaluation with you, so that they have that information or something.
We'll say it.
Just at the top.
I know, I didn't, that's a good idea, Jamie, good idea. Anything else on that, policy and discussion? Okay. And I'd like to bring, let's try to bring that back maybe for the next meeting, if it's regular. And that way we, um, we don't let this get by the wayside someplace. All right, public comment. Any public comment here? No hands? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make him up for me adjourned.
Any more discussion, any questions, comments? Alls in favor? Thank you everyone for attending tonight.